Hello, today, June 8, 2015, meeting of Florissant City Council. As we begin this evening, I would ask Stephen Burghold from Troop 884 to come up and lead the council in the pledge of allegiance, I'd ask the audience to stand and join us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stephen. Item number two. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shildroth.
Here.
Hanky.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Sayam.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Let the record reflect, a quorum is present. Item number three, election of officers. I will make a motion to remove this item from the agenda as we covered it at the last meeting. That agenda, that motion is seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the item will be struck from the agenda. Item number four, approval of minutes. Mr. Sayam makes a motion to approve the meeting and executive meeting minutes of May 28, 2015. That is seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And Mr. Caputa makes a motion to approve the work session minute, meeting minutes of May 20, 2015. That is seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, hearing from citizens. If you would like to make a statement and address the council for three minutes, I would ask that you fill out a speaker card located at the entrance of the chamber entrance. If you forward that card to Mr. Hessel, he will pass along to me. And please remember, this is not an answer and question, question and answer session. This is your opportunity to let the council know your feelings on whatever topic you would care to address us upon. Good evening, Mr. Polsky. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record.
Joshua Polsky, 748 Locust Drive, Florissant.
And if you need to, me to pick up the microphone, speak right into it, please, sir.
Is that better? Or is it off? I don't know. It's on. Okay.
Try it again. They said it was on.
Is that better?
Lot better. Thank you, Joshua.
Sure. So, I actually wanted to come up here and say something separate from the breed specific law first. I just want to say thank you for taking care of the speed sign on our street. They came last week and hung that back up on the new electrical pole. I also want to say that we were able to get the wires taken care of from AT&amp;T. They came and hung them all back up in the back of Becky's yard. So, I just wanted to share that information. I guess, in regards to the breed specific law, I know you guys keep seeing me up here, so I'll make a brief. Just, one of the things, I guess, I wanted to say was, if you guys do nothing else in regards to amending the law or changing the ordinance, it would be nice to clarify the language in the law with regards to the burden of proof. Currently, the way the language is written is that the burden of proof is more so on the resident. So, in Becky's case, you know, when she went up there to register a dog, they looked at a cellphone picture, and from that picture, they determined that it was a pit bull. There's been no other proof for this. So, if there was going to be any change, even if it was not to remove the law, would be to maybe make the burden of proof on to you guys. If that means paying for a DNA test at the time that this type of situation comes up, at least there would be, you know, hard evidence to say whether it was that breed or not that breed. The other thing, too, is I know that you guys granted her an extension, and we definitely appreciate that. I'm not sure if you guys are going to have a chance to talk about it, but it would be nice if a decision was made either way, just so we can proceed with whatever next steps we determine, instead of kind of being in a middle ground at this point, even though, again, you guys were gracious enough to give her another extension. So, that's all I had to say. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Polsky. Lori Icing. Good evening, ma'am. If you'll state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Hi, my name's Lori Icing, 713 Locust Drive, Florissant. I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak. I'm here on behalf of Becky Whitner. I support her recommendation to review the ordinance. Breed-specific legislation is discriminatory, and there are several legitimate organizations who oppose that, that being the Humane Society, the ASPCA, the American Kennel Club, even government organizations, the CDC, and the Obama Administration. So, I just, I just ask that you review the ordinance, you know. The second reason, I mean, this is a shelter dog that she rescued. It's a win-win situation for everybody. You get a dog off the street, he gets a second chance at a happy home, and somebody gets a companion. And, you know, to take that dog away from her, I just, I don't think it's right. So, I just wanted to share my, my views, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am, for your time. Good evening, ma'am. If you'd state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, my name's Raylene Barton. I live at 24 Ridgeline Court, Florissant, Missouri. And I'm here in support of the letter that's against the BSL. I can't give you any stats, I can't give you any names of any organizations, just what I've seen with my own eyes and experienced myself. I canvass for a lot of political candidates throughout the whole area, done a lot in Jeff County, and I knock, I'm a stranger knocking on doors. So, the dogs are going to be protective. They're not going to like me. The trouble I have with dogs are the little ones, your little shitzus, your little fuzzy ones. Don't let me go a cogger, they scare the crap out of me. The pit bulls are the ones that are licking me to death. They're the ones that want to play. They're the ones that want to be loved. And I don't have any problems with them. Some of the rottweilers, some of the other bigger dogs, yeah, they're a little bit boisterous, but they're friendly. Most of them are friendly. Don't punish the dogs for the owners. Thanks.
Thank you for your time, ma'am. Rich Clark. Good evening, Mr. Clark. If you'd state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Hi. My name's Rich Clark. I live at 7 Lenkis in Florissant. I'm here to talk about, thank you, first of all, that we come here and talk to you. I'm here to talk about vacant houses. I know there's, I know it's an issue in Florissant, I know it keeps growing. I've got one next to me, it's been empty for, coming up on six years. And it's on its second investment owner, they haven't done a thing. The place is a mess. I know you all have to come out and cut it. I wish they'd cut it more, because grass is usually about knee-deep by the time they get to it. I know I bug my councilman, Joe, and thank you, Joe, for all, I know you've tried to help. We just seem like we need to get more teeth in this. I mean, I know we got laws, but, you know, they've got no interest in doing anything. I've talked to the owners myself. They're willing to sell it, but they don't want to pay the back taxes, which I know two years behind coming up on three, so we're probably talking about 17 grand for back taxes. I know when you had the gentleman out there that kind of cleaned it up a little bit, he said minimum, just to get it in sellable shape, 50,000. I mean, you know, they're not worth that much. So, I'm just, you know, I joke with Joe about putting my cat on the payroll because she's having a field day catching rats. She averages one a day. I got pictures of that. Just something needs to be done. I just wish we could do something, and it's an eyesore, and I know there's other ones around, you're probably all tired of seeing them and dealing with them. Just like for some help with that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. We'll continue to work on this issue. Thanks for coming up tonight. Gina Walsh. Ms. Walsh, if you'll state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative, and talk real loud into the mic, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kind of short. My name is Gina Walsh.
You can actually pull it down closer or take it off if you need to, ma'am.
My name is Gina Walsh, and I live at 949 Charbonneer, as of May 4 of this year. Previous to that, I resided at 1255 Charbonneer from October of 2011 till just presently. I'm here to speak about the expansion of the nursing home. I am, first of all, not against it. I have been a Florissant resident almost all of my life. We are four generations of my family here in Florissant, so I am all about Florissant, the progress. I've worked for the school districts. I recently enrolled again so that I could teach in the fall. But my issue is, I've had two-year leases with them. January of 2014, I re-signed for another two-year lease. I have all my paperwork. March 25, I was hand-delivered an eviction notice with, to terminate my month-to-month lease. Never have I had a month-to-month. I have everything that shows, all signatures, everything. That was on Thursday, the 25th. I went directly to Mr. Mike Woodard to ask him about this, show him the paperwork. He knew nothing about it, said it was to some Tim who's in charge of all of this. I contacted him, left him a detailed message. He knew I was, how you can tell I'm talking about it now, it's been upsetting, left him a message. He agreed to call me so we could discuss it and talk about it the next day. The next day, I received a text message from him stating that, no communication, I had to go straight to his lawyer to deal with anything. On Friday, I contacted Mr. Federer from Federer &amp; Federer, who, finally, I'd gotten some information, still to this day, have they not told me a reason why. I knew it was the expansion, they tried to deny it, so it was going to take years. Mr. Federer told me that they had ulterior motives for this property. My thing is, I pay my rent there every month, the girls in the office know me, there's an ample time for communication. In January, when I went to pay my January rent, they should have told me about this and gave me time. I have six children that I'm raising, number four just graduated May 30 from Hazelwood West, earned himself a two-year scholarship, we have plans. I had 30 days to try to comply with this. I immediately started looking for a home in the district so I would not have to remove my fourth grader from Lawson. Thank God, it was God-sent to me, the house at 949. I signed for five years with, we are talking about me buying it. I want to stay here. I am very involved in our community, I'm involved in Ferguson, I am involved in Jeff City. And again, that brings me back to Gina Walsh, and Keith English's office had written an email on my behalf, because I've been trying to reach out. That Saturday, Thursday, I got the eviction, and Friday, I tried to communicate. Saturday morning, my councilman and Mayor Schneider were doing their rounds for the election that Tuesday, and I communicated to them about it. They offered to help in any way. I know Mayor Schneider had written a note, I think Mr. Jones had also tried to contact them. No communication. I also spoke with Mayor Schneider's assistant, and she had never heard anything. It took an email from Gina Walsh's office and Keith English's to get a response. That was on April 29. That had to be 100.
Ms. Walsh, Ms. Walsh, I'm sorry, your three minutes has expired.
I know.
I appreciate your comments.
I just want to state this for the record, that things could have been handled a lot differently. It has cost me a lot of money, and folks might not be fortunate like me to pull out of something like this.
I can appreciate your opinion, ma'am.
I'm hoping they have a change of heart and decide to run the right.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
State Representative Keith English. Welcome back to the chambers, Mr. English. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. State Representative Keith English, 755 Pelican Lane. It's good to see all of you again. I haven't been here since the session started in January, and it's good to see some new faces, and also some faces that I've worked with in the past. Mr. Mayor, good to see you again, and congratulations on your victory in April. I come before you today to let you know that I'm putting together the end-of-the-year session report. It'll come out in the independent news within the next month or so, and I'll be addressing the council at that time. I also wanted to speak, as the lady before you got up, and I wanted to speak a little bit on Bentwood. The Senator Gina Walsh and myself both approved that development. The plans are second to none. We do need some extended care, living quarters for our seniors, and this is a very much-needed addition to our community, a little over a million dollars in development for that piece of property. And I look forward to working with the lady that lives in my district, and also with Bentwood on trying to come up with a solution as well. I've talked to Mr. Woodard, and I know they have a representative here in the crowd as well. But needless to say, it's good to be home. I know we have a long summer ahead of us, a lot of work to do on the state level, but I'll have an in-brief, and I'll work with you, Mr. President, on putting that on the agenda for the next meeting. But thank you, good to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. English, and we look forward to your presentation. Item number six, communications. Madam Clerk, please read the communications.
Letter dated May 16, 2015, from Sandra Delacor regarding the Town and Style St. Louis Neighborhood Trivia Section. Letter dated June 3, 2015, from Rebecca Whitner regarding her opposition to the breed-specific ordinances.
Thank you. Item number seven, public hearing, and we have no public hearings this evening. Item number eight, old business. Bills for second reading. Bill 9097, I'll make a motion for a second reading, and is seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance terminating tax increment financing within, within the Coke Plaza redevelopment area, dissolving the account of the special allocation fund related thereto, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Mr. Jones makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill a third time.
Ordinance terminating the tax increment financing with Coke Plaza redevelopment area, dissolving the account of the special allocation fund related thereto, and authorizing certain actions related thereto.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Sayam.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Bill 9097 passes and becomes ordinance 8145, 8145. Bill 9101, Mr. Sayam makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by Mr. Caputa. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Table 7A, speed limits on certain streets by amending the speed limit on a section of New Hall's Ferry Road.
Mr. Sayam makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Table 7A, speed limits on certain streets by amending the speed limit on a section of New Hall's Ferry Road.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Sayam.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Bill number 9101 passes and becomes ordinance 8146, 8146. Bill number 9102, Mr. Sayam makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Table 7A, speed limits on certain streets by amending the speed limit on a section of North Highway 67.
Mr. Sayam makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Hanky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Table 7A, speed limits on certain streets by amending the speed limit on a section of North Highway 67.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Sayam.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Bill number 9103 passes and becomes ordinance 8148, 8148. Bill number 9104.
Ordinance authorizing an appropriation of $28,100 from the Capital Improvement Fund of the City of Florissant to Budget Account Number 0350 Professional Services for the repairs to the Calavera subdivision entrance monuments.
Bill 9105.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $270,000 from Park Improvement Fund to Account Number 0961 Capital Additions for the replacement of ball field lights and light poles on Field Three and Seven at St. Ferdinand Park.
Item number 10 on the agenda, council announcements. Ms. Pagano.
Yes, thank you. I hope the residents of Wards 5, 7, 8, and 9 have received their yellow postcard for the Third Annual Barbecue, which will be held June 25. That's a Thursday from 6 to 8 at Donegan Park. I hope you can all attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Mr. Jones.
Yes, just trying to remind everybody again, please keep team in mind, you guys. Take a couple minutes out of your time, and then grab a couple canned goods and run them up the street to be appreciated. Also, please watch your pets outside, the summer's coming on. Don't forget the dogs and the cats, water them, please. Another thing, if you guys see streetlights out in the neighborhood, please call somebody. Call your councilman, or call in the city hall, let us know so we can get those streetlights fixed. There's a lot of them out there that's out that I've caught in Ward Two, and it just helps when everything's lit up, guys, it's a little bit safer out there.
Mr. Shildroth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce for a terrific golf tournament on Friday. I had a really nice time. I'd like to thank Mr. Lee and his committee, it gets better and better every year. I would like to announce that the 22nd Friends of Betty Shildroth Golf Tournament is July 18 at the Florissant Golf Club. This event has raised close to $150,000 for the hospice program at Mercy Hospital, where my late mom got some great care. All sponsors are $100, and we do have openings. We're only going to take 120 players, it's $360 for a foursome. Our celebrity chairman this year is former Missouri All-American running back and big red great Johnny Rowland. If anybody's interested, you can call me at 314-839-2927. Thank you.
And what's the date and location on that, Mr. Shildroth?
The 19th, at the Florissant Golf Club.
Thank you very much.
July.
Speaking of golf, the Maryland Heights Police Association had our golf tournament out at the Golf Club of Florissant this past Monday. We brought over 160 golfers out, and the course looked great, and the hospitality that was displayed to us by the staff was outstanding, and it was a really good day for those who visited Florissant, was very, very proud to be a part of it. So, I extend my congratulations and thanks to Mr. Grosch for helping us pull out a very successful event that raised almost $20,000, a big portion of which will go to Rankin and Jordan Children's Hospital. Mr. Lee.
Yeah, Mr. Shildroth, you mentioned the golf tournament, and I just wanted to reach out and thank the mayor. For those that don't know, the chamber sponsors the mayor's challenge at the golf tournament every year, and Mayor Schneider has won it two years in a row, but this year, he graciously allowed the City of Ferguson to, to win this year, so I just thought that was very nice of you, mayor, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll get it back next year.
And, Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to shout out a congratulations to someone that visits our council meetings quite often, and I'd like to congratulate Sean Weller. Sean, would you stand up, please? Sean had just accepted a position with Congressman Clay's office. I'd also like to congratulate our former police captain, also Sean, Sean Fagan, who is now the Chief of Police for the City of Rolla. So, congratulations to Sean. And it's a big feather in the cap for our department to have produced a Chief of Police in another community, we're very proud of that. And we also promoted Timothy Fagan. Another thing, if you guys see streetlights out in the neighborhood, please call somebody. Call your councilman or call into City Hall. Let us know so we can get those streetlights fixed. There's a lot of them out there that's out that I've caught in the ward, too, and it just helps when everything's lit up, guys. It's a little bit safer out there.
Mr. Shildroth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce for a terrific golf tournament on Friday. I had a really nice time. I'd like to thank Mr. Lee and his committee. It gets better and better every year. I would like to announce that the 22nd Friends of Betty Shildroth Golf Tournament is July 18th at the Florissant Golf Club. This event has raised close to $150,000 for the hospice program at Mercy Hospital, where my late mom got some great care. All sponsors are $100, and we do have openings. We're only going to take 120 players. It's $360 for a foursome. Our celebrity chairman this year is former Missouri All-American running back and big red great Johnny Roland. If anybody's interested, you can call me at 314-839-2927. Thank you.
And what's the date and location on that, Mr. Shildroth?
The 19th at the Florissant Golf Club.
Thank you very much.
July.
Speaking of golf, the Maryland Heights Police Association had our golf tournament out at the Golf Club of Florissant this past Monday. We brought over 160 golfers out, and the course looked great. The hospitality that was displayed to us by the staff was outstanding, and it was a really good day for those who visited Florissant. Was very proud to be a part of it. So, I extend my congratulations and thanks to Mr. Gross for helping us pull out a very successful event that raised almost $20,000, a big portion of which will go to Rankin and Jordan Children's Hospital. Mr. Lee.
Yeah, Mr. Shildroth, you mentioned the golf tournament, and I just wanted to reach out and thank the mayor. For those that don't know, the chamber sponsors the Mayor's Challenge at the golf tournament every year, and Mayor Schneider has won it two years in a row, but this year, he graciously allowed the City of Ferguson to win this year. So, I just thought that was very nice of you, Mayor, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll get it back next year.
And, Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to shout out a congratulations to someone that visits our council meetings quite often, and I'd like to congratulate Sean Weller. Sean, would you stand up, please? Sean had just accepted a position with Congressman Clay's office.
Very good.
I'd also like to congratulate our former police captain, also Sean, Sean Fagan, who is now the Chief of Police for the City of Ralla. So, congratulations to Sean. And it's a big feather in the cap for our department to have produced a Chief of Police in another community. We're very proud of that. And we also promoted Timothy Fagan to the rank of Major and promoted Lieutenant Vince Godfrey to the rank of Captain and Sergeant Rich Vaff to the rank of Lieutenant and Detective Chris Schilling to the rank of Sergeant. So, congratulations to those fine officers, and we look forward to their contributions to the success of our police department. We have one of the greatest command staffs that America could ever want to have for his city. And the Daddy Daughter Dance at the National Lodge Friday is sold out, but you're welcome to attend the flag retirement ceremony here at City Hall Saturday at 11 o'clock. We'll have coffee and donuts, and we'll have a very reverent flag retirement ceremony with the honor guard from the American Legion. There will also be participation by the VFW and the other veteran organizations here in Florissant. We're very honored that we have a very patriotic community, and this symbolic flag retirement is to show respect for the flag, even when it's tattered and past its use, we retire them honorably. It's a symbol of the greatness of our nation. Next Thursday night, June 18th, we'll have another food truck night to enjoy down at the Knights Grounds, so we're looking forward to that. And we'll have a Wednesday night out on June 24th in front of Corte's Frame Shop at 610 Rue St. Francis for art, music, and fun. On June 27th and 28th, our annual weekend Fiesta in Florissant Festival is Hispanic music, heritage, and food, also at the Knights Grounds. And then we'll have the North Winds Concert Band and fireworks on July 4th to celebrate the anniversary of America's Declaration of Independence. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be June 22nd, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. Ms. Pagano moves for adjournment, and seconded by Mr. Jones.[1764.33]